Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers and on our county board website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of our legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 2, 2021, and Friday, November 5, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 23, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolutions D, E, F, and G, and adjourn if the motioner agrees. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, October 12, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers. I am the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have for you my report for the month of October. Starting off with enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Sorry, touchy microphones, I guess, this morning. Following the fourth month of the fiscal year, we are under budget by six hundred and nearly $613,000. Three hundred and eighty, nearly $382,000 was spent on overtime costs during October. That's a decrease of about $35,000 from the previous month, and we enjoyed a similar decrease from the previous month before that. However, this is still a number that is much higher than what we hoped for. We have implemented some temporary practices to reduce the amount of overtime, which have significantly reduced the frequency of mandatory overtime. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. 24/7 Sobriety Program continues to be utilized heavily. Seventy-two individuals were placed on the program during October. There were 3,258 breath tests. Nine were positive for alcohol use. There were 16 no-shows for breath testing, and the overall compliance rate was 99.9 percent. Fifty-eight individuals were monitored for 1,368 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, there were two tampering violations, and three alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was also 99.9 percent. There were 984 drug tests administered with 171 violations, and I do want to point out, due to supply chain issues with our saliva tests, we did have to, many of these tests were done using urinalysis this month, which creates some staffing logistical challenges for us, but, so we'll get back, as soon as we get our supply of saliva tests in, we'll go back to that model. Sixteen drug testing patches were submitted for testing, and there were five violations. Work release admitted 15 individuals, house arrest admitted 64 individuals. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 26 individuals. Eighty-three individuals were admitted to reentry services slash therapeutic communities, and we are now have developed some systematic steps to reestablish our therapeutic communities as they existed prior to the pandemic. We're going to do that in a step-by-step process. It'll take a while to get to where we were, to have the amount of communities and the amount of activities that we had, and balance the programming benefits that those, that those communities brought with keeping people safe due to the COVID risk. Pretrial services continues to provide regular information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction, really pleasing response to the pandemic. There were 39 individuals referred for priority prosecution, saving 263 bed days. Three hundred and seventy-six individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,479 individuals were managed on pretrial release over the course of the month with a 96 percent compliance rate. Seventy-nine individuals visited the law library, and we continue to participate in an 18-month-long pilot project to implement the Public Safety Assessment as a part of our strategy to enhance our pretrial release supervision and supportive services. We anticipate our new pretrial program will launch on April 1 of 2022. Enclosure number three, Compliance. We have, we continue to collect our documentation for all, all of our compliance practices, including ACA, NCHC, and PRIA. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Seven officers and two sergeants left employment in October. Three of these departures were retirements. Eight new correctional officers will graduate from the Training Academy on November 12. Our next Training Academy is scheduled to begin on November 29, and we anticipate a class of 10 to 15 new officers joining our ranks. Congratulations to Sergeants Michael Piper and William Selby, and Officer Ronald Hazy, all who retired in October. Congratulations to Heath Lydic, who was promoted to Lieutenant, and to Joshua Thurber, Luanda Ballard, and Jeffrey Strong, who were all promoted to Sergeant. Enclosure number five, Population. There were 1,296 admissions. That's a slight decrease. There were 1,244 releases. That is also a decrease. Our high count was 1,231. Our low count was 1,134. Our average population, daily population was 1,191, and that's a decrease of 20 from the previous month. There were 138 custodial bed sanction days. That is an increase. The U.S. Marshal population increased, and I do want to point out that's in, in conjunction with the agreement we recently signed with them. We had reduced their beds during the height of COVID to probably under 60, and we're gradually allowing them to move up their bed count per the terms of the contract that we have with them. The ICE population decreased, and the felony pretrial population decreased slightly. Our misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations remain stable. The female population increased slightly, and we operated four female housing units throughout the month. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,288 intake screenings. There were 288 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 21 times for emergent medical care. Eight of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in a combined seven days of hospitalization. A series of meetings were held with WellPath, our medical provider, with their corporate office to address the current staffing challenges facing healthcare providers across the nation. This effort culminated with WellPath making salary adjustments, as well as issuing retention bonuses for their staff. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 78 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 11 mental, initial mental health assessments. There were 76 mental health infirmary placements, and 82 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. We referred four individuals to the Board of Mental Health and two to long-term psychiatric facilities. Unfortunately, we expect even lengthier delays for individuals who are waiting placement at the Lincoln Regional Center, as that facility has reduced bed capacity due to staffing shortages. This means some of our severely mentally ill incarcerated individuals will continue to remain in our custody even longer as they await evaluations and competency restoration services. Other noteworthy items. We continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are fortunate to report that we had zero new cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population in October. Approximately 70 to 75 percent of our staff have been vaccinated. As of September 1st, we had vaccinated, that should be, I'm sorry, that should say November 1st. We had vaccinated 1,323 incarcerated individuals, including 80 of which who were vaccinated during October. Requests to, requests to be vaccinated remain steady among the incarcerated population. And though this is always a rolling figure when we book in and release approximately 40 people every day of the year, we have been inching upward in our number of, the percentage of the total population that has been vaccinated, and we reached nearly 50 percent by the end of October. We are currently working with Human Resources, County Administration, the County Attorney's Office, and our bargaining units to address the pending presidential executive order mandating COVID-19 vaccinations for federal contractors. Recently issued guidance pushes back the effective date of the mandate to coincide with the implementation of a contract amendment with the United States Marshal Service. As of now, we have not heard from the Marshal Service regarding a contact, a contract amendment. However, we will begin processing medical and religious waiver requests in accordance with established guidance in the coming weeks. Significant progress has been made with the installation of our new security system. A significant portion of the, of our campus is now covered by the new system, and the vendor believes that the project will complete, will be completed several months ahead of the original timeframe. Our staff displayed their artistic talents for a Halloween door decorating contest throughout the month and throughout the jail. Personally, I was most impressed with the Michael Myers door, which had my picture under the mask of the famous movie character of the same name. Positive pro-social activities like the door decorating contest are just one example of how we are attempting to provide a more positive work environment in a very challenging profession. I and two of my staff attended the American Jail Association's Wellness, Resiliency, and Retention Summit in Columbus, Ohio, and we are eager to put into place some of the ideas we learned, learned about to improve our mission to have a healthier, happier, and more skilled workforce. With that, I am ready for your questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. As we usually go over this, the demographics of our inmate population, I believe that's on page 40. Could you run through that for us real quick?
Yes. It appears for our race demographics, about 44 percent are African-American, 37 percent are Caucasian. We have 12 percent Hispanic, and much smaller percentages for Native American, Asians, and others. So we continue to have a disproportionate minority population in our jail.
Right. I think it was about 64 percent last month, a majority-minority population among the inmates. It appears to be slightly up from that. Is that about right?
Yes, yep.
The average daily population I see is at 1,191, which is down slightly. And I know that over time, there are high months and low months in October. Is this year-to-year about average for where we are in October?
Probably pretty close. This tends to be the kind, the time of year when our numbers do decrease. There's been some things that have bucked that trend. Last year, early January, we spiked way up high, and that may have been due to a variety of factors, even perhaps at the, you know, not as many courts were in session during the, during the holiday period.
So you're giving us the month-to-month, and it's down 20 over the month. It might be helpful going forward if we had a year-to-year comparison, so we can capture that. I recall from my time as a criminal defense attorney that, you know, there are certain portions of the year, say late summer, when things tend to spike.
Correct. You're correct.
That would be helpful. The personnel levels, if I read this correctly, we're, we lost nine, two sergeants, and seven corrections officers.
That's correct.
But you anticipate adding eight new later this month. It's just kind of...
A wash, basically.
So when we have that assessment, and I don't have a page right in front of me, where we show the different authorized level and actually staffed levels, I, my recollection is that our, maybe that's in four, is it?
It is on, no, it's in enclosure number one, page seven.
Okay. The corrections officer component is traditionally, you know, the one where we struggle the most. Authorized at 349, currently we have 303 for an 86 percent staffing level, it appears. And I know that you've done everything that you can, and we've got more classes coming on later this year, and it's improved marginally, you know, over your tenure as director, and I applaud you on that. The overall...
One minute.
Authorized level is 492, and we are at 429, 87 percent. But the bulk of that is in the frontline corrections officers component, right?
That's correct, sir.
That leads to the overtime, which is running up, I don't know, close to 400,000.
That's correct. That, the staffing, and we are also, because of the pandemic, there are some positions that aren't in our staffing plan that we are filling, that hopefully someday we can pull back out of the staffing plan. But there are additional positions which are just being staffed by overtime.
Some help. Pandemic's been tough on all of our frontline people, and we want to recognize that going forward. So hopefully we can do something there that, and we'll probably have to come back on this, because that leads to the COVID vaccination questions.
Time.
We'll come back.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, thanks again for the, for the report, the information. Follow up a little bit on what Commissioner Kavanaugh just said. What would you consider, Mike, and we can talk about this offline too, but I wanted to bring it out here. What, what would you consider an optimal training class number? So in other words, based on, based on the percentages that, that you guys were just talking about, what would you like to see? I mean, not a class of eight. You'd like to see, what, 16?
Anywhere, up to 20. When we get over 20, sometimes I worry about losing the one-on-one, you know, the quality that, that we want to make sure that everybody's progressing and that our trainers have an adequate ability to evaluate each officer as they progress and develop their skills. But we certainly would like, you know, the labor market has been tight. Our classes have gotten smaller.
Okay.
We're hoping for a little bit better luck towards the end of the month.
Okay. I wish I had a magic wand. Mike, I mean, enclosure number seven, in the mental health area. The referrals to the community-based mental health services, there were Board of Mental Health referrals of four, and there were long-term psychiatric facility referrals of two. Are these referrals, Mike, are they based on capability? Are they, are there, are, are they resource-based strictly? So, so in other words, if we had, if we had more capability, resources, or capacity, would those numbers be higher?
They would, and, and this does not include all the connections we make for people in the community. These are for basically individuals where, one way or another, the court system's involved in directing their, the course of their care. There's probably hundreds of referrals made every month to, for individuals coming out that are being released for community care and resources.
Right. And correct me if I'm wrong, and if you look at the, in enclosure seven, what you laid out is the initial psychiatric assessments, initial mental health assessments, and mental health infirmary placements. Over 160 of those, or whatever, roughly, 150 of those, roughly. The point I'm getting to is, I'm wondering, and I'd be, I'd be maybe way off base here, I probably need to do some more research, but if they're, if they're, if they're funneling into a community-based mental health service, there are mandates from the feds and the state that say that that actually has to happen. Now, I'll, I'll dig into that a little bit more, but I'm wondering, it just, it caught me off guard. I'm like, how come there weren't more of those in those two categories? So you answered the question, and we can follow up on that later, but it just seemed different to me. So I thought I'd ask that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Thanks again, Mike, for the presentation. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Friend and Commissioner Kavanaugh are saying, I think there's a question, is it, what do we do with the, with the dangerously mentally ill? And it seems that they are incarcerated. And so, it sounds like we don't, there's no outlet for Douglas County to, to have a facility statewide or whatever, just because really now we're spoiling down to staffing, and we all know about the staffing shortage in the healthcare profession. So do you have just any, any insight? Did you want to speak to that a little bit more?
You know, it, there's a lot of things that we wish we could have, you know, obviously, or that we wish that the community, you know, had available to us. Your assessment is correct. I mean, the, the folks who are the, if they're mentally ill and dangerous, we, we have most of those folks at any given time in the community. And not only that is, you know, it's not the, we're not built to be a therapeutic environment. We do the best we can, and people can and do get better during their time with us, but I don't think that they are able to thrive to the extent that they could in a different sort of environment. And it also takes an impact on our staff, who have to deal with, a lot of the times, there's the assaults, you know, bodily fluids. I won't go too much down the, you know, that rabbit hole with terms of specifics, but there's a lot of, a lot of uncomfortable things that our staff see and deal with and are confronted with on a daily basis, and, you know, that takes a toll on folks as well.
So it sounds like we need to hopefully figure out some type of solution in our, our assessment of the mental health in our community.
I am eager to be a part of those discussions, because the status quo is just not acceptable.
The second question I have, and just looking at the data on page 21, I noticed that there are folks who are denied house arrest, and just looking at why they're denied house arrest, what the thing that struck me impressively was that there's a, almost at least a third of them are denied house arrest because they don't have a home. So do we, I mean, looking at the numbers, in October during, during the current month, denied house arrest for no residents, inappropriate residents, homeless, or no local ties, 21 people, and year-to-date is 223 people.
Right.
I think what, again, that does is draw attention to really what we need to do to stabilize people, to keep them out of the correction system, because not only is that that bad for the individual, it's actually bad for taxpayers, is what it really boils down to. So we're basically housing folks because they don't have homes. So do we have any programs that, or nonprofits we work with to help these folks?
On a, on a very case-by-case basis, sometimes we are able to put some of those folks work with facilities such as Santa Francis or Open Door Mission, if somebody's going to treatment there, that we can also have a, you know, electronic monitoring bracelet on their ankle while they're there. But this, you are, you are correct, this is indicative of, of, we spend a lot of resources to keep people the same. You know, people stay, stay homeless, they stay incarcerated, they stay, they go to the emergency rooms. We spend a lot of resources in our community to maintain the status quo for folks.
Makes sense. And then the one last thing, it's really just an explanation for me. I noticed under reentry services, you mentioned that more are being released to therapeutic communities. What are therapeutic communities?
So we had, we started our reentry services program about five years ago.
One minute.
And we had, basically, we wanted to, our therapeutic communities were, are a concept where we don't just group people by their security classification, but we group them by their common need. And really, like, our first one that really stood out to us was our incarcerated veterans program. And we then replicated that in a, in a couple of other settings, and we have some additional ones. It's my goal, though it's been delayed because of the pandemic, my goal is to have about 25 percent of the jail operate as a therapeutic, as therapeutic communities, where programming is infused into those housing units. Basically, it's what they do all day, every day. And so we're kind of inching back towards that vision right now.
So those are communities within the, within the corrections?
Yes, so the individual housing units. We have 29 housing units in the jail. We have a few of them, and we would like to have several of them that are built out with these resources and programming that helps specific populations.
Time.
Thank you.
No other lights. Commissioner Kavanaugh? No other lights. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Following up on what Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Friend were talking about in terms of the, the mental health population, you have some good information here. I think it's section seven, showing the, the population inmates diagnosed with mental illnesses, you know, eight hundred and eighty-eight, with a total mental health diagnosis of eighteen hundred and eighteen, average diagnosis per inmate of 2.05. That's way over the 50% mark of our average daily population of 1,191. And so when we talk about, you're taking people to Board of Mental Health, that's when people are determined to be a danger to themselves or other, and they are legally segregated. The other referral, I guess, is this long-term mental health referral. And I heard you just now discussing this with Commissioner Boyle. That's an internal mod, inside corrections? What is that?
No, that, that's, those are referrals to the Lincoln Regional Center.
I'm sorry?
Those are referrals to the Lincoln Regional Center.
To the regional center?
Yes.
Okay. Another secure facility.
Correct.
The, the idea, you know, that we're all touching on here is, wouldn't it make sense with this enormous population of mentally ill people to have a, a secure mental health facility on the corrections campus itself, where we could take people, particularly the most ill or dangerous people, and, and put them in someplace where not only they would be out of the general population, but we could provide them with some, some mental health care, mental health professionals?
Yes, Commissioner, that would be, an opportunity like that would not only allow us to more safely care for the individuals who are afflicted with a severe mental illness.
Sure.
You know, by having a facility that was built specifically for that purpose, but it would also, the rest of the facility would run smoother because those folks take up so much of our resources in terms of our time and effort, you know, in the rest of the, throughout the rest of the facility. So, you know, for me personally, that would be a win-win, I think, for our department, for our staff, and for the individuals who are in our custody.
And it would make sense to have them segregated from the mentally ill population and our general population because these individuals are with you because they're charged with crimes, right?
That, that's correct.
So not only are they mentally ill, but they are in the criminal justice system. And so mental health facilities in the, in the community would be, I guess, reluctant to take people charged with crimes. They probably wouldn't have the, the ability to secure people charged with crimes in their facilities. Is that right?
That, that's correct. I mean, if they're charged with a crime, they'll, they will be with us.
So we need a segregated, secure, mental health facility, ideally on your campus?
That would be, you know, a concept like that, we could support that with the resources of our, of our existing campus. And at the same time, I think, do a very good job of caring for the individuals in our custody.
Back to the COVID question. You indicated that about 75% of the staff are currently vaccinated, right?
With my disclaimer that that is an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, I think you said 70 to 75%, which has been kind of the stable percentage for some time, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I think we're going to hear from the Health Department here. We have some federal guidelines coming down that might mandate further vaccination facilities, like corrections. The medical care component in number six mentions 21 emergent medical care referrals. What is emergent medical care? What does that term?
That, that could range from anything from somebody having chest pain to an out-of-control blood pressure issue that, you know, or, you know, a seizure, or, or it could be just somebody needs stitches after hours when we don't have a provider there to do it ourselves.
Like emergency medical?
This means, yes, we're taking them to the emergency room.
Okay. And which emergency room do they go to?
Typically, it's UNMC because of the proximity to the jail.
And are they segregated there into kind of a secure?
No, we just have to staff our officers present.
Thank you very much.
Mike, when you were talking about the overtime and the, even though it's been decreased, you said it was still high and not what you would want. So what's our goal?
That's a great question, Commissioner. You know, it's been so all over the place during my tenure, it's difficult for me to establish a goal, but I can give you a frame of reference. When we were, early this year, we were nearly, well, for three hours, we were 100% staffed. I'll claim that on my resume, that we achieved that. But we, in, in the months following that, the amount of overtime that we had was way less than half of the, of what I reported today. It was, you know, maybe about a hundred and, 180,000. And that's when I get complaints from the staff that they can't get enough overtime. So it's interesting how that works, but. So, you know, they, we have done much better. And so getting to that range of where it's under 200,000 consistently, I think, would be the goal.
Would be a goal, okay.
A stretch goal.
What?
A, a big goal.
Right, right, right. So, and then on the 21 times for emergent medical care, and then you went on to talk about how Wellpath, you had a meeting with Wellpath and their staffing. So are we fully staffed in the medical now?
No, they're, they're like everybody else. They're short as well. They have made a little progress recently. I was, they had a little bit of an exodus of staff that had me quite concerned that if we lost any more, that we would have been facing some, some serious dilemmas in delivering the medical care that they're contracted to provide. So we did have a series of conversations up their corporate chain until we got the action that I think was sufficient to stem that tide, and they have made some very recent gains in their staffing. They still have more.
But still not fully staffed?
They're still not fully staffed.
And then, and do, do we know, or can we get what those, what it should be and where we are and what positions we're?
I can get all that for you, yes, Commissioner.
All right. And then when we were talking about the ones that were awaiting their evaluation and competency, competency restoration services, I thought we were moving or going to have the ability to do those in our facility. Has that not taken place yet, or what's the, did I dream that, or?
No, you didn't completely dream that.
Okay, good.
That, so that's a statewide, there's a change in the law a couple of years ago that just took effect last July, this past July. And I know Diane Carlson was working on this as well. So there, as of right now, I don't believe there are any providers in the state doing this outside of the Lincoln Regional Center. So up till now, that, that effort has not yielded any results. In terms of us taking the...
But not yielding results because not having the staff, or what?
The staff and, and, and I think the resources available to, to implement it. And I'll be honest, Commissioner, there are some of these questions that are a little outside of my knowledge at the moment in terms of...
Well, we can talk about it at another time. That's one minute. That's fine. But maybe tag that one for us to have a further discussion about. And then we'll probably run out of time on this one. But on page two, when you talked about the eighteen-month pilot project to implement the public safety assessment as part of the strategy to enhance the pre-trial release supervision and supportive services, do you have a executive summary of what that program is or what this pilot is?
We're getting close to where I could provide that to you.
What's that?
We're getting close to where I could provide a document like that. We've been working with stakeholders from the courts. You know, Commissioner Rogers is on this committee as well, and all having to agree to the same practices and standards. So there's a lot of people to align, and I think we're getting pretty close to where we can.
There's nobody else in the queue, so I'm going to do my second five, so go ahead. And when, when do you think we would have that information?
I think I could get something to you by, you know, within a month.
And I guess before that is...
And I could, I can get you, I can get you a framework sooner than that. I mean, every, every little detail is still being, still worked out among that group.
But the pilot's going on?
Well, no, the pilot will launch on April 1st. This is, this has been prep work to align the local criminal justice system on, on the pre-trial practices that we're all going to agree to do moving forward with a launch date of April 1st.
Okay, all right. Okay, that, that helps. Thank you. And then as far as the mentally ill and, and violent that are in our jails, again, I would like to remind everyone that because it happened during behavioral health reform, that they shut down the regional centers, which took away our access to house those type of individual or individuals with that type of issues in the regional centers. The only one that's left to do that is the Lincoln Regional Center, which, yes, they are short-staffed, but since reform, they have been struggling with what their purpose is. And it has changed numerous, numerous times. They are currently going through a renovation, which is also causing loss of beds. And I can go back when we had those discussions where we warned the state, which is their responsibility, the long-term care, care of the mentally ill is the state's responsibility, that this is what would happen, is that they would end up in our jails. And that is what we have been living for the last decade. So anyway, I want, we've talked many, many times back from when we were, when we bought the Greyhound bus station is to have some type of a component where we shared resources for mental health and the jail to leave them out of the jail. So I am hoping as we move forward with our discussions and plan for what we use our ARPA dollars for, that we don't lose sight of the individuals that we're talking about here because these are the ones that, one, are hard to deal with, two, that community providers don't necessarily provide services to because of their violent and aggressive behavior, because of their mental illness, and because we have no place to put them where the state is responsible for those individuals. And I will just state again that jail, no matter how mentally ill someone is, that jail is not the appropriate place to treat someone with mental illness. End of story, period.
Agreed.
I think we've done a spectacular job for what we've had to deal with. But, and I think we're serving the individuals as well as we can, but bottom line again is that's not where they belong. And a lot of times, their mental illness is what triggers their criminal activity. And so if we can get them, one, in the correct services, get them on the correct medicine, and get them into a recovery state, that's what's going to be best for the individual. So, you know, again, we'll continue to work on that, but it's, it's frustrating because, again, this is a shift of responsibility that the state seems to do more than not, shifting that responsibility to the local level. With that, again, if we could just talk a little bit more about that pre-trial at, at some point in that.
Absolutely.
Those assessments and restorative competency, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right. With that, I appreciate your time and the report. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Please note, there is also the minutes from our pre-board meeting on Monday, November 1st, that are available. And then item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through J. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just have a quick informational question for the viewing audience on item J, which is a resolution approving an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement between Douglas County and the Teamsters Local 544, representing covered employees within Douglas County Health Center and Community Mental Health Center. We touched on this yesterday during the pre-board meeting regarding the amounts of this and who was actually getting that. And I know that the administration, Ms. Carlson, came up with some numbers, I believe, for us on that question?
Hi, Commissioner. Yeah, yeah, Mark Garcia Martin, yeah, Douglas County Labor. So I, yeah, the information I did send to the board yesterday, it's, it's on par with what Ms. Carlson said in the pre-board meeting. Overall, the short-term cost of this contract amendment will be upwards of $3 million. We, and I have the breakdown, if you want me to go over all that, but there are four elements of this contract, four elements included in this contract amendment, but that's the ballpark figure that I'm providing to the board at this point. There are significant increases.
Exactly. So this $3 billion is coming from where?
Three, three million with an M. Million, yeah, three million, okay. And so three of the four elements, they're eligible for the ARPA funding source. So I will say of the four elements in there, there's the temporary premium pay, that's eligible for ARPA. The new hire signing premium is eligible for ARPA, that's about $48,500. And then number four, the referral premiums, that amount is $51,000, and that's eligible for ARPA as well, as far as we understand. The remaining amount.
Comes from?
The two million, yeah. From General Fund Reserve.
Patrick, you're not, sit down and state your name, please.
Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator. That 2.1 million we captured with, from the ARPA for lost revenue, we're using for that.
So of the 3 billion, 2.1 comes from this lost revenue ARPA funding?
2.1 million comes from the ARPA funding we captured with lost revenue.
Right. Of the three, of the overall 3 million in the entire package.
Yeah, the rest is ARPA funds.
And the rest is straight ARPA?
Correct.
So essentially, ARPA and RPA.
Correct.
Thank you. And these will go to employees at the Douglas County Health Center?
Commissioner, this contract amendment covers all of the health occupations at the Douglas County Health Center and CMHC, Community Mental Health Center. So that is all the LPNs, CNAs, CMAs, RNs, Psych RNs, Psych Techs, everyone that's included in that bargaining unit under health occupations.
And this is recognizing our frontline health providers who, during COVID, have been in, like I said, the front lines of us in the battle against this pandemic with our vulnerable population at the Douglas County Health Center. They've done a great job, and I want to salute them for their hard work, and this is in recognition of that. ARPA allows us to do this with employees who have had significant risk involved in their occupations, providing services to the population during the pandemic. So these healthcare employees represent the first of, I think, a number of... So these healthcare employees represent the first of, I think, a number of categories of employees that we have that fall into that very risky occupations and essential services-
One minute.
That need to be provided to the residents of Douglas County during the pandemic. And they've done a great job, and they're real heroes, and they deserve our support and recognition.
Any other questions or comments about consent agenda items? I believe there was a motion, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next are our recognitions and proclamations. We have one, resolution recognizing and celebrating Charles Jackson French for his heroic actions during World War II. This is brought to us by Commissioner Rogers, Dan Ash, and Ben, Benson Elmore. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me, I'll read it first, ask for the motion, and then give some background. It says, whereas Douglas County, Nebraska wishes to honor individuals who reside in our community and perform selfless acts to help others. And whereas Charles Jackson French was born on September 25th, 1919, in Foreman, Arkansas, and is believed he learned how to swim in the Red River as a child. And whereas Charles Jackson French enlisted in the US Navy in 1937, and after completing his enlistment in 1941, he moved to Omaha, Nebraska. And whereas 12 days after attack on Pearl Harbor, Charles Jackson French re-enlisted in the Navy. And whereas on September 5th, 1942, Charles Jackson French was on the USS Gregory, which was sunk that day after an engagement with Japanese forces near the British Solomon Islands. And whereas Charles, Charles Jackson was one of about 15 men who were adrift on a raft after the USS Gregory was sunk. And whereas to avoid drifting ashore where Japanese forces would be waiting, Charles Jackson French towed the raft by ti- Charles Jackson French towed the raft by tying a line to himself and swimming for an estimated six to eight hours in shark-infested waters until the raft was spotted by American forces. And whereas also, he only received a letter of commendation from the US Navy for his heroism, Charles Jackson French had a poem, "The Strong Swimmer," written by him, written about him by Pulitzer Prize winner William Rose Bennett, and was memorialized on war gum trading cards and in comic books, and was named Hero of the Year by the Chicago Defender. And whereas Charles Jackson French passed away on November 7th, 1956, in San Diego, California, and is buried at Forest Rosenkrantz National Cemetery. And whereas in June of 2021, nearly 65 years after his death, Charles Jackson French was honored with a special ceremony at the US Olympic Swim Trials in Omaha. And whereas this Board of Commissioners hopes more will be done to recognize and memorize, memorialize Charles Jackson French for his heroism and selfishness. Now thereby be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that this Board hereby recognize and celebrate Charles Jackson French for his heroic, heroic actions during World War II. And with that, I'll ask for the motion in a second.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, any other comments?
Madam Chair, I'll say, I want to thank the clerk for bringing this to our attention, to do this, and also Benson Elmore, Veterans Director, is on. As it says in the resolution, Mr. French got honored for this, but it was one of these kind of acts that are numerous around the country where individuals of color, because the times, did not get recognized at that moment in time for it. And talking to the clerk about this, we, we talked for some individuals in the community and thought it would be good to just lift this up close to Veterans Day. And being that we won't meet next week, that's why we put it on this week. And not only for, to recognize Mr. French for his acts, but for all the veterans that are out there, this would be a timing period for it. So with that, I'd like to ask the clerk if he has anything more to say on it. And I think Mr. Elmore is on Zoom, if he has some comments.
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Well, this is an example where social media actually did me some good. I was on Twitter one day, and back in April, and I saw a tweet from a guy named Jerry Whitney. I'm not sure who he is, but he looks like he's just kind of a, tweets about military-related things. And he wrote, "On September 5th, 1942, United States Navy Petty Officer, First Class, Charles Jackson French of Omaha, Nebraska swam through the night for six, eight hours, pulling a raft of 15 wounded sailors with a rope around his stomach through shark-infested waters after the USS Gregory was hit." And so, that's when I, I was talking to Chris shortly after that, and I said, I'd be honest, I've never heard of this individual before, and Commissioner Rogers hadn't either. And then I reached out to Benson, see if maybe the, you know, our Veteran's Service Office had anything on him. And Benson didn't either, so we, we just talked about, well, we should, kind of like Chris said, we wanted to honor him. And we figured today would be a good day, obviously because of Veterans Day, but because it was literally his 65th anniversary of his, of his passing on Saturday, November 7th, so we thought this would be a good day to do it. And then it was just one of those things where, you know, if you ever talk about something that you've, it's new to you, then all of a sudden you start hearing about them more. So it was shortly after this conversation, we, we learned that the US Swimming Trials was honoring him. A guy named Bruce Wygo, I don't know if I'm saying his last name right, but he used to be the Director of the US Swimming Hall of Fame. And he's actually written some articles about Charles Jackson French, going back to the mid 2000s. And so an article, little story, two-page story I found of Charles Jackson French by Bruce, I'll just read an article, paragraph from it, if you will, if I may. "French's story came to light after Robert and Adrian, a young ensign, told a reporter from the Associated Press about how a powerful 22-year-old mess attendant named French, and how he swam through shark-infested waters towing to safety a raftload of wounded seamen at the USS Gregory sunk by Japanese naval gunfire near Guadalcanal. Ensign Adrian was one, was the only one on the bridge to survive and floated over into the water as the ship sank below him. Hearing voices, he found a life raft filled with 24 wounded men." So according to this gentleman, it was not 15, it was 24. "Adrian, although superficially wounded, was able to hang on. Quote, 'I knew if we floated ashore, we'd be taking prisoners of war,' he said. Then French volunteered to swim the raft away from shore. He stripped off his clothes and asked for help to tie a rope around his waist and tow them to safety. Adrian told him it was impossible, that he would only be giving himself up to the sharks that surrounded them. Quote, 'French responded that he was not afraid, that he was a powerful swimmer, and he swam all night, six, eight hours, until we were eventually saved by a landing craft.'" So. And I'd like to thank, I think so far his efforts have not been successful, but I know Congressman Bacon, after, maybe he saw the same tweet I did, but I know about the same time in May, in June, he had reached out to the Navy Secretary, Thomas Harker, asking for a review of his service record and to make sure that his valour was properly recognized. But at that time with this, the World Herald wrote an article a couple of days before the US Swim Trials were doing their thing to honor him. And at that time Congressman Bacon had not gotten a response, but I know there's other people trying to make sure that he gets, I mean, obviously it's 65 years ago, but I guess they say it's never, it's better late than never. He certainly deserves more than a letter of commendation, so. That's all I have, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dan. And Benson, did you want to say a few words?
Sure, absolutely, thank you very much. Suffice it to say, you know, as a veteran and on behalf of veterans, it's always appreciative to be recognized, you know, for our service. But specifically for, you know, Charles French, this is truly, truly a great honor. You know, obviously more can be done, but I really do extend my gratitude to Commissioner Rogers and Dan and the entire body here, this is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Benson, and thank you for the work that you do and your service. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Benson, thanks for the information. And, and Dan and Chris, thank you, this is a fascinating story. I can't get enough of these. And my words are hollow, but I, I could read this stuff every day. I'm just, I'm just glad it was brought forward. And with a son in the military, a long- Thank you. Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan?
Just wanted to express a real thank you, Dan and Chris, for bringing this forward. Pretty amazing story, and coming to light. And this gentleman must have had tremendous ability to swim all night. I mean, he can't even hardly swim 10 minutes, so really, really great to have this public, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, I'd just like to say thanks to those who brought this in recognition of this great American and his contribution after the fact, but in time for our Veterans Day recognition. It's important that we remember those who did remarkable things in the service of our country, in our wars and through our armed forces. It struck me that it's taken this long, as Commissioner Rogers points out, for this gentleman to be recognized for something this remarkable. I, I was struck by the parallels between what he did and what President Kennedy did upon sinking of his boat in the South Pacific in World War II, which was hailed not only at the time, but subsequently in print and in a movie. And yet this gentleman who did something remarkably similar goes unrecognized for, you know, more than half a century. So thanks for bringing this up. These forgotten heroes should not be forgotten. And I want to add my voice to those that say this is a, this is a good thing and an appropriate thing, and a great way to recognize our veterans on Veterans Day. So thank you for doing this.
Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Chair, just, I'd like to just add one more thing in, in respect to that, and that is, unfortunately, we couldn't get any family members here, but also, you know, the two resolutions that went around, we signed, we'll try to get one to the family, but also to the Great Plains Black Museum. But note that Charles Jackson French's legacy is still, it's still felt in the community. When this was recognized on TV, they had two family members. And I know one of his family members personally, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Chester French, who has served the community for a long while through his service in a lot of organizations, particularly in the leadership of the NAACP here in the local chapter. So know that the family's efforts extend beyond Mr. French, and they have been valuable contributors here in Omaha. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I forgot one thing I wanted to mention. So Saturday, November 13th, at noon, this coming Saturday, at the Revive Center, which is near 24th and Lake, they're having a Nebraska Remembering Our Fallen exhibit. And Eric Ewing's gonna read this resolution at that event, so.
Thank you. And we had a motion and a second, no further comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We have one recognition for a county employee who is retiring, John Brenner, who worked for the Douglas County Public Properties Department for 22 years. We wish him well and thank him for his dedicated service to Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132, please excuse my driveaways. Today I want to continue basically along the lines of the Open Meeting Act. And some definition, questions, definitions of certain things, reasonable, what does reasonable mean, et cetera. But there's some additional information I want to add to what I presented last week. I won't leave all of this with you, Dan. And essentially, this is for new members, benefit more than old members of the commission. The intent of the Open Meetings Act is basically for citizens to be able to have input and participate. But in this town and in this county, we have an awful lot of community partners that have your ears more than the citizens do. As you can see, there's not very many other citizens down here. Wonder why? Some of them don't know much about what is going on down here, because you guys don't tell us. Part of the reason is, we have community partners that are also columnists or community columnists or reporters. We change the words now and then. But I presented some information last week regarding Mr. Luis Ramirez, who comes here and does not say that he represents anybody else other than himself, but he does. And many of the community partners that come up here do. He writes for Codex, a lot of articles about what he hears here in, in the city council. He writes for NOISE. Maybe he doesn't currently, but he did for a long time. And he had information that the citizens didn't hear, as did Omaha World Herald, The Reader, a couple of different articles. And sometimes the reader will say something like, well, they must have interviewed a lot of you guys, because we never heard this down here. But we hear lots of things repetitively that, oh, that has been intentionally kept from black people. Omaha Star, the new American cancel culture. The new ideology, ideology of rage, which is cancel culture, and that I'm still guilty of all the racism of the past. And there's no evidence to the fraud of the election. A lot more people think that there is. Back to Mr. Ramirez. Just some of the topics. In Codex of Omaha, there's about five of these. Talking about the police department, the Trump effect, rent and utility assistance, Franklin Thompson, city contractors, county board allocated CARES Act funds. Where does he get all his information that we don't hear about?
One minute.
The Colxer House, which is a community activist location. They maybe get funds also, but they, on their page, they say they're about activism and protest training. I like that. About NOISE, some of the community partners get funding, such as from Sherwood Foundation, Wheat's Foundation, Hitchcock Foundations, Community Foundation of America, American Journalism Project, Racial Equity and Journalism, the Fund Borealis Philanthropy, editorial independence, something or other. Right there in their, in their papers. They even activate over in Iowa. They have little subgroups called the Great Plains Action Society, the Revolutionary Action Party, which-
Time.
May I request one more?
Larry, time, anyone else in the chamber wishing-
A lot of our community partners do get extra time, thank you.
Larry, you're done, thank you.
Very much, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. We have our presentation on the COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update by Dr. Lindsay Hughes, our Health Department Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. So I wish that I had better news for you this morning, but we are definitely seeing a lot of COVID again.
Can you pull the microphones a little closer?
Yes. Can you hear me better? Right. So we're continuing to see high transmission in our community with COVID-19. And unfortunately, it appears that that is not something that is going to resolve very soon based on what we're seeing here in our community. So for several weeks, we were seeing a decline in our cases, which definitely had us hopeful, if cautiously so. And over the past couple of weeks, we have seen those numbers unfortunately begin to go up again. So we are currently sitting at 207.4 per 100,000 for our seven-day total number of cases. We suspected that that could happen. Watching what is happening globally, Europe is seeing a huge spike in cases currently. I would say rivaling the spike in cases that occurred a year ago at this time of year. And so that is a situation, of course, that we always, you know, what's happening in Europe is something that we watch very closely here as our trends oftentimes will tend to follow about four to six weeks later. So we are hoping, however, that because we have our vaccination efforts ongoing, we've just approved the 5 to 11 group. Hopefully, we are able to get vaccinations onboard quickly enough to blunt any type of major increase that we would see. However, this is not a time to rest on our laurels or let down our guard. Seeing an increase coupled with what we're seeing in our hospitals is certainly reason for us to stay guarded in what's occurring. So in terms of what is happening with our hospitalizations, currently, we are in our region at 87% occupancy for medical beds. We're at 90% in our ICUs and 86% for our pediatric ICUs. 191 of our inpatients are COVID inpatients. 187 of those are adult and four of those are pediatric. Currently, we are seeing 37 individuals who are on ventilators. So if you look at this chart here, the one to the right that's very jagged, you will see that currently our hospitalizations are higher. Our occupancy rate is higher than what we saw at the peak of our previous increase. And so this is really something that we're worried about and kind of really trying to keep our eye on. This is not a time that we want to let down on our guard with what's going on. And I just want to remind people, first of all, that this is staffed beds. So this is basically who we have, you know, the number of beds that we actually have staff to man. And then also, what we've heard is that the staff that we do have that are taking care of patients are actually taking care of more patients than they should be. So for instance, in the ICU, you may have nurses caring for four patients in the ICU rather than two. So even when we talk about capacity and staffing, it's actually probably even worse than what we're reflecting here. So I just want to not panic people, but make sure that there is an appropriate level of concern and making sure that people aren't letting their guards down too soon. Certainly, our ICU level of care has remained very high, which indicates, of course, that we continue to have high levels of severe illness in our community and our ventilator usage, of course, is remaining high. Anecdotally, hearing from others in the state, it's still difficult to transfer a patient in the state. So I know that oftentimes they're looking for beds outside of the state. In terms of hospitalizations and COVID cases, COVID cases do now make up more than 10% of our hospitalizations statewide. So you may have seen the release yesterday that Governor Ricketts approved our statewide dashboard to go back up. So that is currently back in place. So if you want statewide information on COVID that is currently available, it will be updated daily rather than the limited weekly reports that were occurring when we had dropped below 10%. In terms of deaths, we had 10 deaths reported last week. Four of those were vaccinated, six were unvaccinated. So we are continuing to see a few more deaths that are reported each week. One thing that I have asked for from my data people, we're not quite ready to report it yet, but I will be able to report it next week to you, is really a better proportion of vaccinated versus unvaccinated deaths. So we report that week by week. But of course, you know, saying four of them this week were vaccinated sounds like, oh, well, 40% of, you know, our deaths are vaccinated people, which is not true. When you look at the entire population of deaths that have occurred since our vaccines have come out, that rate is certainly going to be much different. And I want to make sure that we're reflecting that accurately for you. So that data should be available for you next week. Our case positivity is up to 9.6. We are seeing fewer tests in the community, however, which can impact that. I'm hoping that we will start to see more tests in the community. We are also having some lags in reporting with some of the testing sites that are out there. So that's something that we're currently working through. In terms of where or who is getting COVID, we're certainly still seeing cases occurring in our pediatric and school age population. But last week, our largest area of growth for COVID cases was actually in ages 30 to 39, most likely in those that are unvaccinated. So that was a little bit of a change from our previous trends. Of course, we are continuing to see spread in our schools. And we continue to have classrooms that are recommended for closure because of the number of cases that they're seeing. And so we are still working very closely with our schools and our superintendents to mitigate those issues that are continuing to be ongoing for us. Breakthrough cases have increased slightly to 1.6% in the county. Just as a reminder, breakthrough cases here are defined as the number of or the percentage of people who have been fully vaccinated and gone on to have a positive COVID test. So right now, we're sitting at 1.6%. And then the death rate for the same is 0.01%. And what that tells us is, first of all, that we are probably, we're probably undertesting for people who have been vaccinated and maybe having some very mild symptoms that could be COVID-related. The vaccine is working extremely well in terms of preventing severe illness and death. But as people have gotten further out from their initial vaccination series and we get immunity waning, we're just getting, you know, a few more of those milder breakthrough cases that are occurring. So as people start to get their boosters and continue to get their boosters as they have been, we'll probably see that number stabilize. And in fact, it was at 1.5 for a number of weeks. So I would say that that really has essentially been stable. Speaking of vaccinations, we do continue to provide vaccinations throughout the community. 5.8 or 58.1% of all of our residents are currently vaccinated and 70.2 of our 12 and over are currently vaccinated. So as you know, we recently were approved to start administering to our school age children, so our 5 to 11. Douglas County Health Department started administering those vaccines yesterday. Very happy to report that at our first two events that occurred yesterday, we had over 600 people become vaccinated and most of those were 5 to 11. So this particular dashboard, looking at vaccines, is going to probably change pretty significantly over the next few weeks. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that number move. We also will be adding to this a slide or a tab that will be specific for that 5 to 11 group so that we can talk a little bit more in depth about that. So we're very excited about that. Taking a look just at registrations for upcoming clinics, for 5 to 11 for Douglas County Health Department, it's very exciting to see several of those are very close to being full. And most of those are actually out at schools in Millard and OPS. At least for now. I'm sure we'll be adding more sites, Millard, OPS. And we do also have opportunities to be vaccinated at our actual site, our building. So Douglas County Health Department also has clinics that people can come into to get vaccinated. So we're very, very excited about that. Going over to the map. So this is looking at vaccination by zip code and this is by percentage. So you can see right now, we haven't seen a whole lot of movement on this, but hopefully over the coming weeks, as we're working on those kiddos and also working with our partners in North and South Omaha, we're going to see hopefully some of these colors darken. So the darker the color, the higher percentage of that population have been vaccinated. So in terms of our vaccination plan, like I just talked about, we are working very closely with our schools to offer those vaccines. We are also, like I said, offering our vaccine onsite. And we will continue to offer, you know, our regular services in terms of pop-up clinics and things like that as we are able to out in the community. And also working really closely with our advisory panels, both in North and South Omaha, to make sure that when and where and how we're offering vaccines in those areas really align well with the needs of those populations. We're also working on messaging to help people feel better about getting the vaccine if they're still experiencing some hesitancy around that. We're working closely with physicians in our community to be the voices that are really putting out those messages. So you can see some great PSAs coming forward here in the coming days. Really excited for those to be out there and be public. So we are continuing to really campaign for, you know, people getting vaccine. I think that the vaccine is going to be probably our best tool for blunting whatever spike might be coming. And I think that, you know, until we get there, we have to still continue to keep our guard up and make sure that we're doing all of those other things that we know are effective for preventing COVID-19 from spreading in our community. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. And to the positivity rate of 9.6, that's up from last week by a percentage point?
Possibly, yes.
Any short explanation of how that happens?
Well, for one thing, we have more cases occurring, more than likely. But also, you know, if we have fewer people that are, if we don't have as many people testing, it can inflate that number somewhat. We also, like I said, have had some testing or reporting issues coming in from sites. So that can influence that as well. So just, yes, it's at 9.6 and we're definitely keeping our eye on that. But we have a couple of other variables that we're trying to work out as well.
So going into that, on the maps page on the dashboard, and the colors are a little different on the presentation that you have here on the dashboard that we get online. But it appears that, you know, there's a high number of cases in some West Douglas County zip codes, 68116, 68022. And then some high numbers in some inner, closer to the river, 68104 and 68107. But on this dashboard, it shows virtually no reported cases in far western Douglas County, 68064, 68069. Is that right? Are there no cases coming in from those zip codes? Because that's what it appears on this map.
So keep in mind that this is reported cases. So that depends on people actually getting tested and then the reporting coming in from the labs that are doing any testing. So it appears that it's low. This is also a count. So, you know, it depends on how many people are living in that, in those zip codes. So if it's a low population and people, you know, have a little tickle in their throat and they say, well, it's fall. It's just, you know, an allergy from all of the dust in the air. They may not necessarily be going in and get tested. So I don't know that we can say there are no cases out there. It just is that we don't have any, we don't have a lot of cases reported from out there.
The vaccination mandate that we hear about coming from the federal level, what's the status of that?
It's currently on hold. So the Supreme Court, I believe, issued a stay on that as some have wondered about the constitutionality of that mandate. So currently, it's sitting.
So it was, I think, initially supposed to come online when?
If I remember correctly, it was in November. And of course, now we don't, you know, now it's, since it's stayed, we don't know when that'll, when or if that will come online. And I don't remember if it was just, I want to say either November 7th or December 7th that it was supposed to come online to basically, you know, anybody who fell under that mandate was supposed to get vaccinated.
So have you received the details of that mandate of who's actually mandated?
We have not gotten it through our, you know, through the state or any channels like that. We really have just gotten it through, you know, news outlets or, you know, if you read it through what the CDC might have put out or that sort of thing. We haven't actually received any kind of a formal notice, at least not at Douglas County Health Department. Douglas County certainly may have gotten something, but I don't know about that.
And the kids vaccination status, did I hear you correctly that Douglas County Health Department opened a kids vaccination facility yesterday? Is that right?
It's not a facility per se. It's just a clinic site that was set up at a school. So, and we're doing that at multiple sites.
What school?
McMillan. Is that right?
McMillan?
I think that's right.
Well, that's great.
And there are many. And if you actually go to, actually here-
We'll come back to that.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Boyle, and before you go, Commissioner Boyle, can I just add something that that stay granted by the court was just for the private employers?
Okay.
Part of that mandate. And I think they originally had delayed it from December 8th to January.
Okay, December. That's what I think. And I apologize. I've been on leave- until yesterday. So I'm a little bit out of the loop there.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, thanks again. And just to point out my broken record status, but it's that the hospitals are stressed. You know, I think we have to keep recognizing this and I'll keep bringing it up because I'm feeling it in the trenches. And to hear that 90%- percent of ICU beds are not, are full is really, it's very alarming. And so, I know that one way to mitigate it in the past has been to hold back on elective surgeries or things that can be delayed, you know, not elective per se, but just things that are not as urgent. And so, I was wondering if you have any other thoughts, or if you've been talking to the hospital heads about how to mitigate this situation, because with weather changes, I think that more people are getting to get the flu, those beds are, they're going to be even more, more full, or even fuller, and then staffing is just not there, and they're burnt out.
Agree, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, while we were cautiously optimistic in previous weeks presenting this data, I really wanted to make sure that I was expressing concern today, especially having heard from our hospitals and knowing that flu season is on the way, and more and more experts are predicting this to not be a pleasant flu year, and we still have RSV circulating. We kind of have a convergence of a lot of things besides COVID that are all kind of mixing to create really a bad situation for our hospitals. And so, we had almost no flu cases last year, and it's because of the mitigation strategies that we had in place for COVID. And so, really talking about not being too early with letting go of our strategies, making sure that we are keeping these things in place, because our hospitals have nowhere to go at this point. I mean, we're talking about some hospitals having no beds, some of our hospitals have maybe a handful of beds, if you're lucky. They continue to bed patients in hallways, you know, in the ERs. It's just a really ugly situation, and it's something that we need to be attentive to, especially given the convergence of influenza and kind of all of the other crud that happens this time of year. There's just, there's nowhere for our hospitals to go. And when there's nowhere for that, there's no, nowhere for them to go, I mean, even expanding beds, where are you going to get the staff to man those beds? If you have an ICU nurse taking care of four ICU patients, you're already severely compromising your standards of care right there. You're doing the very best that you can, it's something that you unfortunately have to do, because you have no other choice, but you're not getting the care that you normally would get when you're correctly staffed. It's just bad. So, I just really want people to, as you're making the point, to think about kind of the situation that we're in and be cautious.
Yeah, so that's from the patient standpoint, from the nurse standpoint, do you know how burnt out these nurses are getting from taking care of four patients instead of two in those situations?
It's unbelievable.
It's really awful to see, I've had conversations with ICU nurses I work with, and unless you are physically ill and in a hospital, the regular population, we're all burnt out from COVID, every one of us, I'm burnt out as a citizen, and then in the hospital, it's really awful to see what's there. So, but it's not until you step foot in a hospital as a layperson that you realize how critical this situation is. So, we have to keep bringing it to light, and like I said, I know I sound like a broken record, but at the same time, this is a big deal, and when you're confronted with going to the hospital with chest pain, you may not get the care you need, because number one, that those doctors and nurses may be with other patients, and number two, there physically may not be a place to have you sit and wait for that. So, just to make that point. And then, just a couple-
One minute.
A couple other things, too, with, we had talked about the percent of the folks vaccinated in the western part of the county, it seems like a lot of vaccinations are there, but there are a high number of folks getting it there. Do you know, as a percent of people vaccinated, raw number wise, there are more cases there, but as a percent of the population, do you know if they're any different than, or what that looks like?
So, these actually are percentages. So, for instance, six eight zero two two, they are between sixty eight point three and seventy four point five percent vaccinated for the population that lives in that zip code.
And then, what about cases also seem higher in those zip codes as a percent of cases?
Yeah, and our cases right now are still case counts, so that's something that I'm talking to my Epi's about, just to see if we can make that a little bit more comparable.
Yeah.
But, you know, even at seventy, sorry.
We'll come back.
And just, Commissioner Rogers was having trouble with pushing his in queue, so I was keeping track the old way through paper, so Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to build on what Commissioner Boyle was asking Dr. Hughes. She went into a little bit of what I wanted to do, but I just wanted to make the point with you and get your opinion on it, and kind of restate, I guess, the, kind of the tick tock of where I think we were, are now. Can you allude to what, how you're thinking through handling, or how, any conversations that may have happened with just the season of, what are we thinking if someone gets the flu and COVID at the same time? What are the, what do you think the effects of that will be? Because also, I mean, just to state that, I don't know if we're not increasing at the rate that we were last time, but this is about the time it was increased last time. Last time at this point, there was a mask mandate, last time at this point, there was not a lot of intense indoor events. Now, you're going to have indoor events, they're going to be a little more crowded, you don't have the mask mandate. Because of that, you will have less people wearing that, which I think you definitely, we will definitely have a higher flu count. I just lay that out to give an idea of where you stated and Commissioner Boyle stated, just kind of the gravity and the intensity and the wall we are actually under, there's really not a lot of room for error. And can you just allude to a little bit, what are you thinking, or what the talk out there, if any, for citizens that may get COVID and the flu at the same time, and what are you thinking that ramifications is?
If you get flu and COVID at the same time, that can be, that could potentially be very severe, especially if you're talking about people whose immune systems are not great. The flu kills people, COVID also kills people, so you're talking about being infected with two potentially lethal infections at the same time. So, that could be a very severe situation. I don't know that we've seen a lot of people be co-infected yet, so really, what that means for somebody's body remains to be seen. How are those two viruses going to truly interact in a person's body? I don't know, I think it could be extremely severe. It could be that somebody who's normally very healthy and could fight off the flu effectively, or could fight off COVID effectively, may not be able to effectively fight both of those off. So, it really underscores, again, the need for getting vaccinated against both. If you haven't gotten your flu shot yet, go get it. If you haven't gotten your COVID shots yet, go get them. Continuing to wear masks, I will say, I think it's premature to start talking about taking masks off. I think that that is something that, in the interim, as we're trying to get more people vaccinated, I still think that that's an effective measure that we can put in place to help people not transmit and not catch either one of those. We saw last year that this was one of the things that worked effectively at preventing flu and COVID at the same time. It was shocking, really, how few flu cases we had last year.
Yeah, I doubt if we get that grace this year. And just note for closing and turning back over, I think, you know, not only, you know, we have more, but I think the reins are going to be loose on the holidays. Last year, people weren't really loose, and I think people are chopping at the bit to be with their family. So, I think, you know, we should be on alert for at least the next month and a half, with two major holidays coming and people wanting to, tonight to emphasize, we're not out in there, is a term I heard, one epidemiologist used, giving the amount of people unvaccinated-
One minute.
-to wood. We still got a lot of wood to burn.
Yep.
And with people being unvaccinated, so we just need to be on guard. So, thank you, Dr. Hughes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Hughes, thanks again for, it's always informative. Do you, can you, and you might have broken these down, I might have missed it, when you go back to the hospitalizations, eighty-seven percent of the beds in our hospitals in Douglas County are, that's the capacity, ninety percent of the ICUs. Did you clarify the percentage of those beds that were either COVID-specific or related?
So-
Maybe you did, I missed it.
Yeah, so a hundred and ninety-one of the total inpatients are COVID, and a hundred and eighty-seven of those are COVID, four of those are pediatric.
Okay, so, does that, do those two numbers reflect the eighty-seven percent and the ninety percent? They don't, do they?
Part of those would fall into the, not the total. So, eighty-seven percent occupancy includes COVID and all of the other things people might be hospitalized for. Keeping in mind that, you know, there are a lot of other things that are happening in the community.
Right, including, and we've talked about RSV, infants in the fall and everything else.
Correct.
Do, rewind, rewind back a couple years before, and I know you were here, but I know you know environments like this. What is, and I could have gone off into Dr. Boyle's office and talked about these numbers, too, and we'll probably do it later. Before all this occurred, what were, what were normal rates of ICU capacity, I mean, around here, or any other highly populated county? I mean, are we comfortable with fifty to seventy-five percent, or are we, you know, from a nursing standpoint, from a doctor's standpoint, a resident's standpoint, what are we comfortable with?
Yeah, I mean-
That's a hard question.
It is a hard question. Fifty, certainly, much more comfortable. You know, if you've got half your beds open, you're fairly well-prepared to handle whatever's coming in. Even at sixty percent, you know, you still have a fair amount of capacity there, but it's just, as that grows, all of your resources start going to those more severe patients.
Right, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to go down a certain path here or make a case for anything, I'm just asking a couple of questions that'll help me get to a point where I understand what the nursing shortage in this country is actually doing to us. We're not training enough nurses. I mean, there's been, there's been a couple of years of a situation where the schools aren't kicking out as many nurses, there's a, there's not a glut, I mean, we're all fighting for that skill set. Because of that, they're stressed out because of COVID, and they're stressed out because we're understaffed. So, I'm wondering, I guess, where that leads me, is where does, are some of those things changing from a countywide perspective, a statewide perspective, and a national perspective? Are we training, have we understood now because of the pandemic, are we training more nurses? Are we putting people in motion to implement these type of things to reduce the type of pressure that's on the system right now? You know what I mean? So, it could be two years before we feel great effects of it, but are those wheels in motion, in your opinion?
Yeah, I would say those wheels have been in motion for some time, and part of the issue is that our nursing workforce has, to some extent, aged out as well, so it's not just a shortage of nurses who can take care of patients, it's a shortage of nursing faculty who can educate nurses. You also have nurses who aren't going necessarily to those med surg beds to work, they're specializing and going to surgery or to pediatrics, or, you know, kind of to some of these more exciting specialties where pay is better. So, there are a number of variables kind of in there, but there are efforts nationwide to try and get more nurses educated and to bedside. There's also, probably not enough, but there are also efforts to increase nursing faculty so that we can get those nurses educated, but there, it is a very complex and very big problem that we're having here, and I would also say, it's not just in nursing.
Right, thank you.
Teresa, Eric, your light had been on, were you still wanting to be in the queue?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Following up on the kids vaccination question, you indicated that it's begun in local schools, and I think these are vaccination sites that you're showing here right now.
Yeah, this is, so this is what we have set up right now, and I'm sorry if it's a little bit small. For anybody who's watching this, we also have it in Spanish, but you can see, yesterday we were at Beverage and McMillan. Today, we have a clinic open at Douglas County, Element Learning Center, RM Mars Magnet School. So, you can see that we have a number of clinics set up, and this is really just for this week, and we update this, like, if anything changes, it's updated in real time.
That's great. So, parents would know that it's going to be at Beverage tomorrow or something by going to this site and seeing that, is that right?
There should be information coming out through those individual schools, but you don't have to go to that school to get a vaccination there. So, you can, you can actually go through here and schedule to come to that site. So, if you click on this big blue button up here, you can actually see where you can go in and you can register to go in.
That's great, but say I had a kid at, again, McMillan, and I could go here and find out that there's going to be vaccinations at McMillan tomorrow, and then, as a parent, do I have to be with the child when I bring him in? Do I have to sign something? How does that work?
Yeah, so, we, there is one site that we're piloting, a, basically where a parent can sign consent for their child to be vaccinated without their presence, but that's just a pilot right now. We generally do require a guardian to be present when a child is vaccinated, so we do need a parent or a legal guardian to be with that child when they come in.
And these school-based sites, vaccination sites, are they like nine to four, or what's the, what's the hours on those?
So, four to seven. Our clinic onsite at our health department is twelve to four, but most of those that are happening at schools really are trying to hit those after-school, early evening hours to accommodate work hours and school.
So, your advice for parents with school-aged kids in this category would be to go on to the dashboard and just check any site, but particularly if there's a school that your child is in, go to that site.
Absolutely, yes.
That's really good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Were you done, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Morning again, Dr. Cruz.
Good morning.
I wanted to hear a little bit more about the PSAs that you mentioned, if I can, and especially in particular, to work with our populations that speak different languages, I'm assuming Spanish, of course, is a part of that PSA push, but also, some of our refugee populations that have come, you know, in the thousands in recent years, and especially, for example, our Korean population, Burmese, who speak Korean, and our Sudanese population, many of which speak Arabic, are any of the PSAs and some of our kind of educational pushes hitting on those languages and populations?
So far, the one that I saw yesterday was in English, however, where's my PIO So, this is, this is Phil Rooney, he handles a lot of our media coordination at Douglas County Health Department, and he has been absolutely instrumental in organizing and helped to coordinate a lot of the PSAs that we're involved with, so if it's okay, I will let him answer some of that.
Do I have to identify myself, or did she take care of that?
No, identify yourself.
Phil Rooney, Douglas County Health Department. Yesterday, we provided information to Restoring Dignity, a nonprofit in the community that deals with refugees and immigrants. They will, they sent us a bunch of questions that they thought the population needed to have answered, we provided the answers, and they will translate those into fourteen languages and record videos to reach out to the communities. So, and we've worked very closely with the Spanish language stations and the Spanish language papers, I'm getting information out to them, so. We have, we've been doing all that sort of outreach, Ben Salazar's been an incredible asset for us in South Omaha, we've been working for Carvajal, so, but I don't think a lot of people are aware of what's going on with Restoring Dignity. Fourteen languages, they translate them into, and then they produce videos, because a lot of those populations cannot read the language, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And they also then get the message from a trusted messenger.
Definitely, that's great. What are some of the vehicles or avenues we're using to push those videos and other informational pieces?
Well, right now- Well, right now, we're still waiting to have the first one approved, what we plan to. It'll be, Channel Six helped us produce this one. So they'll be airing it. We'll be putting it on our, on our, throughout, through our face, through all of our social media channels and, including YouTube, and we'll make it available to anybody else that wants to use it. So we'll send it out to community partners if they want to share it.
Great. Do ever, do we ever do any kind of targeted boosting on social media? Where we target populations that either speak a certain language or maybe if we're having certain issues and certain zip codes that kind of coincide with diverse populations of different languages? Kind of really refining how we, we reach those populations online?
We have had some town halls on Facebook and other platforms to address the South Omaha community's Spanish speakers there. We've worked with some of the medical personnel who speak Spanish, so we have worked on that way. And those things are always in planning and development, so we're certainly would be interested to see what you have to offer, what you might have to suggest.
Sure, definitely. Last question. Do either one of you know of, kind of getting away from the online stuff? Are there any community outreach workers that speak those languages, like Karin and Sudanese? Or, excuse me, Arabic? And what organizations they're working for? Like, are we doing well on that end?
Well, we're working through the leaders in those communities. We don't, I don't believe we have anybody that speaks those languages. When somebody calls our information line, we do have access to a translator for them. But we have been reaching out. I've been working with a mosque off, which is off the Northwest Railroad, about Forty-seventh Street, with Mohammed there at that particular mosque. We've done a lot of things with them, and so.
One minute.
A lot of boots on the ground.
Yeah, definitely. Appreciate you both, thank you.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Yep, just, just to jump back on a few other things. And Commissioner Fram was talking about the nursing shortage being due to being understaffed and, and COVID adding to it. And just, just to remind folks out there that it's, it's, it's really the nature of the work that they're doing. I mean, they've seen acuity they've never seen before, and they're seeing death. And it's, it's burnt, it's burnout, not because they're overworked. It's burnout because they're emotionally spent from having to see people die before them. New grads, when they come out, I mean, I, I can tell you, they're not expected to seeing people die, and they may, may be seeing them die, you know, a few in a day. So, so when it boils right down to, we can increase the number of nurses we have as, as much as possible, but they're still gonna get to a point where they would rather work at an outpatient surgery center or an insurance company just because of the death that they're experiencing. So we have to really do a good job of making sure our healthcare workers are taken care of. It's, it's really interesting. Probably the thing that bothers them the most, though, is the, those patients who don't believe COVID is real and their family members, after a patient dies, don't believe it's COVID and insult them. So there's a lot of abuse that healthcare workers take because people still don't believe that, that COVID is real. And it, it's, and now granted, we take care of people who are responsible for their own illnesses and conditions all the time, you know, smokers and lung cancer. But, but with this, there's, there's something about the, how impressive family, family members or patients can be in denial and healthcare workers being, going from heroes to zero in no time because now we're telling you that vaccination may have helped or would have helped. So, so bottom line, I just, just want to make that point. That's part of the reason for the shortage too. It's not just the, it's, it's really the attitudes of patients towards, towards staff sometimes. And it's the death that, that we're seeing on a, on a, not an uncommon basis, which is very, it's really heart-wrenching. And then just, just going back to the, the beginning, we were talking about the trends going the way they are. Do you see, can you put your finger on anything specific? Like, do you, do you think it could be weather-related? Do you think it's human behavior that's increasing the, the counts or the, the hospitalizations? Is there anything specific from an epidemiology standpoint that we could be doing differently? Or, or that, that you can just see big-picture-wise why we're seeing these increases?
Yeah, so I've seen some speculation that, okay, this is our second fall now with COVID, and this could point toward there being a seasonal trend. So that's certainly something that could be contributing and something to keep in mind for next year. And of course, because people are more indoors. So we're not, we're not outside at soccer games. We're not outside, you know, nearly as much. We're all kind of indoors a lot more. You know, that certainly can contribute. And, and there is, there is a backing off as we, you know, kind of saw, saw things getting better, kind of like we did over the summer, of backing off of some of those other practices that work. Many fewer masks being worn, people not being as attentive to maybe handwashing or distancing, not thinking as carefully about the mix of the people in the room. You know, things like that certainly can contribute to that as well. So, you know, I think there's probably a mix of factors that are going on. But from what I'm hearing, other people speculate really the seasonality and kind of that the seasonality forces everybody indoors with that potential, that potential seasonal trend. You know, it likes cold weather, can be really what's contributing to that.
So then, are you at a point too, you would recommend, you would recommend masks, wearing masks, say, just like we were doing last year? Just going to the grocery store? Would, are.
Yes, please. Yes.
One minute.
So just everyday behavior, we just should be wearing, wearing our masks when we're in, in public?
Yes, you know, right now, I think that it's, it's an extra measure as we don't, you know, we obviously haven't reached, we're at fifty-eight percent right now for our total population. That is nowhere near enough people vaccinated to give what you would call herd immunity. So, given the fact that our hospitals are so full and struggling so much right now, why, why would we not encourage every, every practice that we can that will, that will help protect people and protect that capacity, what little there is?
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to put a point of information out there to appoint Commissioner Garcia to say at action about the Korean population. I do know Charles Drew is working with the Korean Burmese population. That's one of the refugee populations that have been growing there service-wise over the last three to four years because of that population's growth over in the Tommy Rose Apartments off Lake and the Shalamar Apartments off by Benson. So I know that, that particular population is being worked with. Thank you.
Yeah, and when I talk about our vaccinations, we administered six hundred. That doesn't include what the FQHCs may have done. So they have, they are getting their own federal vaccine supply right now. So we'll know a little bit more in coming days about that.
I'm glad to see that we're using the physicians based on that that's what our vaccine hesitancy survey result was, who they felt would make the most.
That's exactly.
Impact, I guess.
That's what we used in really trying to develop that strategy. That's who they want to hear from, let's, let's get them involved.
So are we able then, when these start, to, is there a way to track if the impact was a positive in increasing the number of vaccinations?
Yes and no. You know, we can certainly look at when those efforts started and track the trend from there. But also keeping in mind that there are a lot of different coordinated efforts happening. So if, if, how we can attribute it directly to that particular effort? You know, I don't know that we can do that necessarily because if you want to, if you want to speak in research terms, there are a lot of other confounding factors that are happening because we're kind of trying to throw everything we have at this.
Okay. And then, just a reminder that we do have the North and South advisory groups that were set up by the Health Department.
Yes.
To talk about strategies and issues and solutions as to how we move forward. And there's, actually, I've sat in on those and they've come up with some pretty good ideas. And so those are still very active and, and helpful in our efforts.
Very much, and we have actually changed strategies based on the feedback that we get in those. So there, we are very grateful for our partners and those advisory committees helping us to make good decisions for our, for our community.
And lastly, you know, you showed the graph, which is, I, I think was very telling at a time where we're right now at a peak higher than where we ever had been in a peak. But the question, as we come into the fall, looking at where we are compared to where we were last fall, is it similar? Is again, is, are we at a higher level?
All right, well, let's just take a look here. So we would have been about right here. So a, a year ago, we were just coming into really the worst of, of the peak last year. So we're definitely lower than where we were last year. But the scary thing, and that's, that's in terms of just like raw case count. But when you look at hospitalizations, so here we are. I have to get my bearings on the dates down here without glasses on. So looking like here is about where we would have been. So like eighty-five-ish percent, and we're definitely sitting consistently higher with our hospitalization. So that's, yes, we have fewer cases right now going up, but we also have a lot more hospitalizations happening right now. And that is, that is really where it's concerning. And, and knowing that a hundred and ninety-one of those hospitalizations right now are due to COVID, if you had a hundred and ninety-one of those beds back, that's, that's a lot of, you know, heart attacks, knee replacements, cancer patients, whatever other needs you have in your community that are potentially not getting what they need right now.
But I think it is curious that, I mean, even though we were lower last fall, we were still high, if you will, compared to the, one minute, compared to the other times that you're looking at to the left of that chart.
Oh, are you looking at the hospitalizations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, it was just, you know, your comparison fall to fall, I think will be most interesting as we move forward through this and the flu season.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, with that, no other lights, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will see you in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good.
With that, we will move to our committees, the first being the Finance, the Budget Report as presented. Item two has been removed from the agenda. Community Services, we have one item. Annual Public Review of Pheasant Point Landfill Operations by our Environmental Services Director, Kent Holm.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Just to preface this, this is something that we do annually. We did not do it last year because of COVID. And so it's been essentially two years since we've done a formal contract review. So again, a little bit of background context, particularly for, for new Commissioner Garcia. Pheasant Point Landfill is located about five miles west of Bennington, just off of Highway thirty-six. Overhead view of that facility, Pheasant Point here in the, in the gray. The former landfill, Douglas County Recycling Disposal Facility, that's now closed, located just to the west of that. And then there is an OPBD gas-to-energy plant. It actually serves both facilities. So there's, there's methane gas that's being, or landfill gas that's being piped over to that facility and that, that energy gets back into the electrical grid then. Just a brief comment on the services. We have a contract with Waste Management of Nebraska. That contract stipulates that the county operate the scale house, so we weigh, weigh the trucks and take in the revenue for that. And then on a monthly basis, we will pay Waste Management for their, their share based on the contract. We get a variety of, you know, you may recognize the, the top right-hand as a, as a typical trash truck. Waste Management, two years ago, invested in a, what's called a tipper. So there are large transfer trailers that come in. This, this is not the actual tipper that's on the site, but this is just a representative picture. So that allows them to facilitate unloading these large transfer trailers that are coming from a, a, a transfer station. Waste Management also provides trash pickup along the highways leading to the landfill. The Department of Transportation also serves in that, in that function, provides that service. Just a real brief outline of the rates that are currently in place. You may have recalled, a few weeks ago, you approved the, the new rates, which will go into effect on December first. These are the ones that are in place right now. And these are just some of the other scale rates that are there. We also, cooperatively with Waste Management, approve special events. These are generally time-constrained, special events that deal with some type of special waste. Since this was initiated back in two thousand and nine, we've had two hundred and twenty-five projects that have been proposed. Right now, there are fourteen of those that are active. This past fiscal year, which would have been July twenty-twenty-two through June of twenty-twenty-one, county realized net revenue of just under fifty thousand dollars for, for about a little forty-three, six eighty-nine tons. The net revenue to the county coming from this program since its inception has been about one point five million dollars. As I mentioned, the new rates will be avail, will be implemented on December first. The one thing that we're working on right now is, is an amendment to the contract. This will be the fourth amendment, talking about just redefining the, the rates and the special handling fees that are, that are in place, addressing how we do the annual CPI, and then also memorializing the invoice reconciliation process that we do each month in paying Waste Management. Just to give you a sense of kind of where we are with, with annual tonnage this past fiscal year, just a little bit lower than the previous fiscal year, right at five hundred and fifty-five thousand tons. Projections right now, given the first few months of the fiscal year, we're probably about six thousand tons ahead of where we were last year. So I would say, coming back next year, we're probably gonna be about where we were maybe last year if the tonnage holds as it is, is right now. Looking at the landfill life expectancy, there's projected quite a few years there. The other thing that we're working on is, is trying to get a credit card point-of-sale, a payment option available out there. And so we're continuing to look at, at what solutions are potential for putting in place out there, just provide another method of payment for, for our customers. And with that, entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. Could you send this to us electronically, please?
Yes, I'll provide it to, to the clerk's office as well.
That's great. I know from touring out there that we have, in the past, done some methane capturing. And I was wondering, particularly in light of the recent news from the summit in Glasgow about global warming, what are we doing currently relative to that? Capturing methane that is produced actually by the landfill?
Basically, the, and I do have, Ryle Palmer, Site Manager for Waste Management here, could potentially speak to this a little bit more. But when, when the old landfill, the RDF site, was closed, that already had a methane or a landfill gas collection system in there. All landfills have, have that requirement now. So when the, when those cells are, are developed, there's a landfill gas collection system that's put in place as well. And so right now, the closed facility, that methane that's coming, or landfill gas that's coming off there is going to this OPBD gas-to-energy plant. And Ryle, if you want to speak to, to what, what's currently in place at Pheasant Point in terms of, of the landfill gas, landfill gas collection system.
Morning Commissioners, Ryle Palmer, Waste Management.
Morning, Commissioners. Ryle Palmer, Waste Management. The methane from both landfills is going to the power plant, as mentioned. And we also have a leachate evaporator on site, which burns our leachate instead of having to haul it off. So we use some of it for that. Any excess, it's all collected, and any excess is burnt in a flare.
That's great. Is there is there any way that we can capture how much of that methane is being captured and and sent to, I guess it's OPPD for generation, generating electrical power? So that over time, we can see that we're, you know, we're making some progress there capturing these greenhouse gases and and utilizing them? Is there a way that we can map that over time?
Yeah, as Waste Management currently does that, yes. Maps it out, and we have to keep track of all of that per permit and stuff.
Maybe if you could provide us with that, I I I think this is a really good thing to do. And the other question that I have is, under the city's new solid waste contract, there was a change in how yard waste was disposed of. Yard waste is particularly troublesome in terms of generating methane in landfills. And I was just wondering, have we noticed any change in the methane being produced by our landfill since the change in the city's yard waste collection?
No, I mean, not noticeably. I mean, if there was a huge change, it would take time for that to show up.
Thanks for that.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, so so Kent, you had referred to special projects that generate income for the county. Can you give an example?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so one of your slides showed that you you do special projects that generate income for the county. Just give an example.
Sure. So for example, there might be a, excuse me, a contaminated fuel situation where, let's say there's a redevelopment project, and maybe there was a former gas station, maybe there was, you know, some other type of of industry where there was some type of contamination. A lot of times, it it's with soil. And some of the requirements are that that particular disposal product has to go to what's called a Subtitle D landfill. And that's just kind of the 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 federal term for a landfill that that is designed to handle and contain that type of waste. And so some some projects like that, they are special waste projects, they have to go to a Subtitle D landfill, and Pheasant Point is one of those.
Right, that that makes sense. And then the other, just to jump to it. Commissioner Kavanaugh was talking about the OPPD. I know that we've had discussions with them about ways that we can increase our renewable energy or lack of carbon footprint, I guess, from a county standpoint. So we're going to, we've had some discussions with them. And I think, you know, within the next few weeks, we'll have another one, and then possibly bring something to the board to specifically to say what what we can do to partner with them further to make sure that we're doing what we can to be good citizens with the environment.
To that point, Commissioner, not with Pheasant Point, but with our State Street closed landfill, that's where most of that particular discussion with OPPD is going to center.
Yeah, and just to, we've already mentioned a little bit how we can consider solar projects with them and potentially maybe using that land is kind of what what we're kind of throwing out there for the moment. So so anyway, so that's kind of something we've got in in the works. And like I said, we'll be having a a committee meeting for our Environmental Services Committee and and then bring something to the board to just to see if there's anything we can do specifically to help, again, decrease our carbon footprint as a county.
Okay. All right. No other questions or comments? Thank you for the report. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And no legislative items at this time. I will just give a brief update on the conversations that, if you remember, we wanted to see if there would be any possibility of altering our Open Meetings Act to allow us to, and other jurisdictions, to hold open meetings via Zoom with our committee meetings that take no action. Those conversations are happening. And we'll continue to do that and see what we can come up with for a legislative item that I'll bring back to the board at some point. But those are happening right now, and we'll see how and what it leads to. With that, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just real quick, there will be a Health and Human Service Committee hearing next Monday, November fifteenth at two PM here. And that'll deal with the General Assistance Update of their regulation, which they do on a biannual basis, and discussions of rental assistance going forward. Thank you.
We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. And that's, that was it, correct? Labor negotiations, so do we have a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Recording stopped.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion passes six to zero. We, oh, do you want to vote yes, Commissioner Friend?
Sure.
Motion pa-
I have to go to the right.
You're all right. Motion passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at 11:51 a.m.